The February first. I'm calling the February first regular meeting of Hancock County Commissioners to order. We're meeting remotely via Zoom today. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to move that we adjust the agenda and add item to Sheriff six B.
Seconded.
So that's the move the agendas presented with the exception of adding six B. And what is, what's the title of it six B?
Think we lost him. He froze up. Hang on a minute, maybe see if he comes back.
I didn't get what it was. Did anybody else?
No. We should probably start talking about broadband connectivity improvement. See where we get, but I don't know. It's just a thought. Oh, see if he gets back in.
I don't see him popping back up.
Does the sheriff have any idea what it might be or?
Here he is. Hey, Bill.
There he is.
I don't think this is going to work gentlemen this morning for me. This is about the fifth or sixth time it's knocked me off in the last five minutes.
So what's the item, Bill?
I'm sorry, what's, what are we talking about?
Adjust, adjustment to the agenda, Bill.
The item that I want to add is a discussion on Brown's communication sole source document.
Okay, so, so what we're voting on is, as as presented with the exception of adding six B per bill. So that's my motion. If somebody hasn't made it, or I'll second it if somebody has.
I'll second it just to make sure we've got it.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none. The agenda is in order. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment at this time? Julie? Go ahead and unmute yourself there. Please state your name and I'll give you about three or four minutes here.
Okay, I don't think I'll take that long. My name is Julie Meltzer. I live in Southwest Harbor. Thank you for allowing me to comment. I'm commenting today as the president of the Board of Art Waves, which is a community art center in Town Hill. We serve the four towns of MDI as well as having members from and participants from Ellsworth, Trenton, Lemoine, Sullivan, Hancock, Surrey, and Blue Hill. I would like to know if there are ARPA funds for Hancock County that still need to be dispersed and what the plan is for dispersing these funds. As a small arts-based nonprofit, we closed from March 2020 through May of 2021. We're only now starting to offer a fuller program of both in-person and virtual classes and workshops. We have a number of ideas that will support the local economy by paying local artists to be instructors and also to be mentors to student artists. If we had some of the ARPA funds, we would allow us to offer programming for free to families and expand our programming that is accessible to our year-round members and keep the art center adequately staffed. And so for these reasons, we're hoping that small nonprofits like Art Waves can still benefit should there be ARPA funds that have not yet been distributed. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Is there anyone else today that wants to make a public comment? Is it Steve? I guess that's it. Um. So I would just tell Julie that all the funds haven't been distributed or anything. So obviously there's going to be, there's, there's opportunity in the future. Right now, we don't have a grant program per se in place. We did earlier, but that's closed out now for the most part. But we're just going to have to see where, where the future holds. And we've got a lot of things kind of in the works, but definitely haven't closed the door to other opportunities. And obviously there's a lot of stipulation in terms of how the ARP funds need to be used. The last grant essentially just had to do with lost revenue that nonprofits had, and that's how it was allocated. But obviously, we'll, we'll keep it in mind and it's, it's, it's something that's still on the table for sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, our next item is our meeting minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of the January 19th special meeting is presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And next we have our AARP update from John and Kitty. Hi, John.
Good morning, Commissioners. Am I first or Kitty first?
You go ahead, John.
Okay, thanks. So to give you an update, there's a couple of items up there that we talked about. We have spoken with Lemoine and they're working with their vendor to get the appropriate language, I'll say, that, that matches, I'll say, the, the intent of their project, which will also coincide with the ARP rules, which we push back on is what it comes down to. They didn't, didn't match the ARP rules, which is part of our task is to make sure that any of these projects match the ARP rules. So I have spoken to them. I've spoken to their vendor. You know, they're working on it. So I believe it's in the lawyer's hands at this point and they'll, they'll let us know. But the intent is to have that ready for the, in a couple of weeks for the next meeting, they get, get that done. We've vetted the majority of it, you know, it's still a good project. It's just, you know, the language doesn't support ARP. And until that's there, you know, we can't in good conscience say, hey, Commissioners, this is a good project because our job is to make sure it matches ARP rules. So that's where that one sits. There is a, we talked about the Sedgwick, Brooklyn last time and their utility district. So we'll also pull that together with more detail for you for the next meeting as well, because we want, this meeting, what we want to do is go over the spreadsheet that Scott had created. So and we have spoken also with Swan's Island and we've got their data as of yesterday afternoon. And so the, our goal is to vet that, pull that together and try to get that to you for the next meeting as well. So all of these will be scheduled and you'll have our review packet. You know, we'll say the Friday before. So we're glad you can get it out. You'll have it in your packet. You guys could take a look at it before the meeting as well. Any questions on those ones?
On, on the Brooklyn one. When they do, are they going to have a present, like a full-fledged presentation that's going to happen? Or like, or when do we expect that to happen?
Well, we haven't discussed that, I guess, on this group. Our, our thought was we have a packet that we're putting together to show you some of the highlights of the projects and, you know, where the, what the request is, but also what the actual project is. If you're open to, you know, a presentation from some of these towns, I'm sure they're willing to put together a, you know, you tell us the time frame, but I'll say a 10-minute overview. I can, I can work with them on that as well. I, we hadn't discussed it, Commissioner, so.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I know that that one's going to be one of our our bigger, our bigger projects to be considering. And to me, that one, we're really going to have to have a good amount of information to make a decision on it.
No, I can, I can pull, I can work with them and have them give a, like I said, I'll call it, you tell me if I, maybe a 10-minute presentation.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Kitty or John, do you have anything else?
So we did, I think we gave you a kind of a update, just a status report of the towns that, you know, we've reached out to and have gotten back to us and some of the vendors. And so we're continuing to work that. We just wanted to give you an update on that kind of status, status sheet on that. And then Scott, I believe, has the allocation spreadsheet we wanted to review this morning.
Let me ask you one question, John.
Yes.
So on that contact sheet on the town where they're at, I don't know if I quite understand the description of the Union River.
Oh, so we have, so they, they cover, I forget what's on there, six or seven towns. And so we reached out to them to get an understanding of their full coverage map is really what we're asking from them. So it was kind of, kind of a, instead of, we still want to talk to the towns, right? They just haven't got back to us, specifically the towns. But we know that Union River Rivernet is called, covers, you know, the majority of those towns with fiber. And so we just want to make sure that we understand their deployment and what their map looks like.
Okay, thanks.
And these towns that there's no contact, are you taking that as they haven't got to it or they don't have interest?
That is a good question, Commissioner. We will continue, you know, to outreach and I'll work with Scott and Kitty again and we'll try to figure out, you know, Plan D to get to these folks and see if there's, you know, really what we're trying to get to is a contact, 100% contact. That's our goal. And just the status, you know, are they happy? Do they have it? Don't they have it? Maybe have, they're working with somebody. And if they're working with somebody and they're all set, we just need to kind of make sure we know that for our, you know, task to the Commissioners.
Yeah, it's kind of important to know, you know, the overall picture. And I don't know how we, you know, they don't want to burn bridges, I understand. So
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how we.
We'll just keep, we'll just keep pushing and see what we can find. See if we know people in the town and we can ask them at times too.
All right. So Scott, are we going to move on to discussion of the the sheet you created?
Yeah, we can. You know, just real quick, as I put in my notes, provided three options. I think this was presented several meetings ago, a little premature at that time. So if you first, three options here, and the first tab really is to match what the municipalities got. And though that totals 5.46 million. And so that would be a little bit larger than the 5.3 that we've all been talking about. The second tab is just taking that 5.3 and allocating based on the town's percentage of that total amount of 5.4 million. Then the third one I threw in there, I think that had been discussed. I went based on valuation. And John and I talked about this a little bit. And then I think maybe Kitty and probably all three of us. And, and the valuation one seems to be one you can throw out, I think, right off the top. Because it, you know, based on valuation, it kind of continues to give to those municipalities that already have. And I hate to use those words, but ARP is, ARP is, you know, intended for the underserved. And honestly, I think in some of our conversations and going back to those that we haven't had contact with yet or limited contact, the reason for that is, is that they're pretty much already served or they either know or conversations have led to that they, you know, they don't qualify because they're not underserved or the areas that the openings are underserved. So at this point, these are just options. As we continue to say, the Commissioners have not given a, you know, have not cornered themselves in a 5.3 million. There's been a lot of discussion. I think if you're going to veer far from that, or if there's any consideration for doing that, we ought to have that conversation now. But this is a guideline. So it is, you guys, you three, the Commission takes the final decision.
Well, my feeling is, you know, we, we put some thought into you know, the 5.3. That's sort of what we've been working on. So I'm, at this point, I'm not ready to say, you know, it should be half that or double that or, you know. So to me, that, that's sort of a target that, that made sense at the time. I don't see evidence to change it at this time, although maybe in the future, we don't know that. But so but allocation. Allocation, I think, right now is just a, you know, sort of a benchmark because, you know, there's there's, this spreadsheet includes, you know, towns that probably won't be able to take care, take advantage of this because they're not underserved, as John pointed out, or possibly that's the case. I agree with the Administrator's point about, you know, using valuation. My spreadsheet only has two tabs. Not three. So I think that really tab, you know, I have county match. You know, based on the ARP percentage. And I think that's, you know, what one or two were, right, Scott, basically. So to me, that's, that's a good benchmark. Until we have more evidence to deviate from that, I think it makes sense.
I, I agree with Paul. I don't want to be, I don't want to be pigeonholed here to to a particular number for each community. I think we've always said that five mil, either side of five mil was a goal for broadband. And I think it's going to come down to who's ready, when can we assist them? What's it look like as we approach the $5 million mark? Are there a few more if we want to put a little more money into it? We served all that we can reasonably serve and, and close the project out. So I, I, I think five million based upon the allocation is, is a good way to come up with some rough estimate of what we want to contribute towards broadband. But I don't want to be, be pegged to a particular number for a particular community.
Well, I, I agree. And the valuation one is pretty much a no-starter for me. But I think one of the things that I'd like to see, and I know we've kind of seen it in some different maps and stuff from kind of various entities, but I really kind of want to see something that shows us what towns and areas are the most underserved and that we know that those areas are really going to we're going to need to weigh it more heavily on that because it's really about getting the underserved done. So that's why I think it's good to see the numbers here and we can kind of use that as something to kind of eyeball as we start making some of the decisions. But when it comes right down to it, it's going to be how much, this, this chunk of money, how many people is it going to help? And if that's $20,000, great. If that's $420,000, that's, you know, that's great too. But we need to look and see how many people we're helping for every dollar we're spending. And exactly how to create and utilize that kind of map and analysis, I think is kind of partly what John's been doing and working on. Am I right, John?
Correct, sir. Yes.
Okay. And when, when it, when it comes time, when we start, like, I know, you know, it's coming right up here where we're going to start making some decisions. Are you going to be able to give us your analysis and thoughts on bang for the buck kind of?
Yeah. So part of the, part of the packet that we put together will have a, a map for that, that's, that town, that project outside. And kind of numbers of unserved, underserved.
Yep.
You know, it's a, it's a bit of a I don't know if I dare call it science, but it is a research because, you know, the, the evaluation that you get from carriers isn't always accurate. And, you know, when you look at the Connect Bay map, not everybody agrees. And so, but we, we dive down as much as we can with the, you know, conversation with carriers, conversation with towns. The, you know, some of the speed tests that's going on as well as the survey that we're putting out there. If there's good, there's good response from a town. So yes, we'll give you some, some picture of all of that. And we've also, if we have time, you know, it's up, up to the Commissioners. The next meeting was also scheduled, we tentatively scheduled, we could show you kind of the overall map of the area. So we could start with that if you wish, then go into the other presentations.
Yep, that'd be great.
That makes sense to me.
Yep, all right.
Kitty, what, what do you have to say today?
Nothing except that, you know, John's got the bulk of this at this point. And I was just going to add that we're trying to figure out the end while we're trying to start in the beginning. And that's what makes this difficult, right? If we knew where everybody, every municipality set in regards to broadband, it'd be easier, but we don't. And, you know, one of the reasons we're really trying to go after these municipalities is perhaps in a way to show that there are certainly going to be municipalities that are not going to fit or do not request any assistance from us, which might open up monies. But it's sort of hard because we're sort of chasing that circular thought here. So it makes it a little bit challenging.
Thank you.
Commissioners and John and Kitty, what do, what do we all think about? Let's get a, let's get, say, let's get Lemoine prep. Seems to be just a little, just one little caveat that needs to be finished up on that. So whether it's ready or not, let's, let's bring forth a presentation at the next meeting. And then that way you get to see what the presentations look like and can, can sort of help tweak them, guide them, you know, take that sort of approach rather than, rather than waiting. I'm sensing a little bit of anxiety on, on getting one of them going and actually, and I, I think that's shared by John, Kitty and I as well, trying to figure out, you know, what the best approach is and getting this to you. And I've had the most experience with the Commission, so I've, I've been trying, but what do you think of that thought? You a favor of it?
I'm in favor.
Yes, I, I, I am. I mean, it's going to be a learning process for all of us, right?
Right.
And there's no, there's no other way. I mean, we're going to have to face music at some point. And this, the scope and size of this project, I think, or what we think the scope and size of the project is, I think, might be a good one to, to to do that with. So I agree.
All right, anything else?
I have, just while Kitty's on, we're deviating a little bit from broadband, but does touch on the public comment we had. I think there's a perception out there that you know, the county got, has $10.6 million to dole out to you know, needy causes. And that's certainly not the case. I've had a few inquiries, one of them was from Art Waves. And there's been one or two others. I think it's important to funnel all those type of comments through Kitty and our Administrator, just, you know, that way it's all in one place. And then, you know, we, we do have to think about, you know, the future of that program. Well, not the future, because the program we had is, is done. You know, do we do something similar? Do we open that one back up? You know? I you know, these folks, I don't know, there's a, there's a misperception out there that we somehow have to you know, not straighten out, but make them aware that that's not the case. And then where we're going to be going in the future. I don't have the answers to it, but it's going to come up as more and more calls come in. And I think more and more calls will come.
Well, we always had to just keep in mind that we're bound by the rules, the ARP rules and it, you know, there's a lot of guidelines to it. And it's, it's not just a, it's just not a donation kind of situation. There, there has to be a, a loss. And that's my general thought on it, or something directly connected to the pandemic. What's your thoughts, Bill?
Well, I think it's a slippery slope if we start trying to address individual requests. Because it's just going to snowball, I think. I mean, we had a a nonprofit revenue loss program. Everybody in the county had an opportunity to apply for that money. There was funds left over that didn't get used. And I think now it's a, if we just like Paul said, if Kitty had a sufficient number of people and it looked like that's a worthy cause for spending that money, we'll open it up and do it again. But trying to accommodate individual requests, I think is, is, we should really stay away from that and funnel those comments to Kitty and let her, you know, compile that list and keep us informed of what the public is, is interested in. But beyond that, I think we should be real careful how we, how we dole us out beyond the projects we have on the table presently.
Total, thank you, Bill. That's, that's exactly what my thoughts were. That's perfect.
All right. Is that it for our broadband update?
Yeah, one quick last thing we do, just, I forgot to give you the update on the survey. We have 352 surveys today, just to give you a number. And they're starting to spread out a little bit more out of some towns, or some groups of towns, but we'll keep pushing that as well.
Thank you.
John, John, if we're done with broadband, I'd like to draw your attention to the fact that Mike Seelander is in Dennis's office, and I suspect he's here today to talk to us about the ramp project. That's not coming for several other departments down. I'm wondering if we shouldn't accommodate him now so that he can get back to work. We don't have to hold him and it's, you know, for the next hour or so.
Yeah, I think that would work while we move to the maintenance.
You want to go through maintenance as it is on the agenda or just that one item?
I think just that one item.
Okay.
All right, Mike, are you there?
I am.
All right, great. So tell us, tell us where we're at. I know we've got some drawings to look at.
Did everyone see this? Is everyone able to see this?
I haven't seen anything shared.
I think you shared that in the chat, Dennis, rather than on the screen.
Is he just trying to share what he sent us?
Yes.
Okay, I have what he sent us, if that matters.
I didn't get it, so I don't, either that it got deleted before I knew what it was.
Scott just sent it, just, just Scott just resent it at the beginning of the meeting, just so you know.
Oh, I don't dare to get out of this thing.
Okay, all right.
Beth, do you have?
All right.
Oh, here we go.
Area. Almost.
Okay.
All right, can you run it through to us a little bit?
Project from a couple of different angles, just so you can get a sense three dimensionally what it looks like. And Dennis, if you can just scroll through the three. So what you're seeing is, we'll go to the middle one. Yeah. Where the, where the vehicle is, that would be the handicap parking spot. And you would, it's right at the base of the ramp that goes up to the Sheriff's Office. And you can see we're, we're rebuilding the stair to the staff entrance, which is on the upslope side of the ramp. And then also rebuilding the stair to the Sheriff's Office, which is on the left-hand side of the photograph. So pretty much from the garage door, that retaining wall will be getting reconstructed. New, new concrete retaining walls, reuse of the existing stone masonry. And then you know, of course, guardrails and handrails where they're required by code.
Well, Mike, that, that wall though, in front of the garage door would remain, that's the original wall. That would remain the way it is. Is that correct?
No, I think we're going to have to rebuild that just because of the condition that it's in and the work that we are going to have to do. It would be possible maybe to save, you know, like 10 or 15 feet of it, but I, I just don't think it's worth. Um, it would be possible maybe to save, you know, like ten or fifteen feet of it, but I, I just don't think it's worth trying to hit the old wall to a new wall.
Okay, so in other words, you're just gonna replace what's there in the same place, correct?
Yeah, we're actually gonna try to provide a little bit more slope from the sheriff's office entrance door. Um, south or, you know, towards um the parking space just to improve, um, you know, both drainage and also just, you know, to help with the overall vertical rise that we have to go from the parking space up to the sheriff's office. So right now, that, that um concrete landing at the top of the existing stairs um, is for all intents and purposes flat. And so if we slope the, that concrete landing a bit more than it is right now, um, we can just get better water drainage away from the door.
A good feature.
Wait, can we move on to the next picture for a sec?
It's like this area. Yeah, would be sloped downward a little bit.
Are we gonna lose that two or three of those trees there, Mike?
Um, so you actually have two or three big trees as well as a couple of little ones, and I'm not showing, um, any of those trees in this rendering. I was just concentrating on, you know, the, the hardscape. But we believe that the tree, the trees which are there outside of the administrator's window, for instance, um, they can remain. The, the work that we're doing in that area, we don't think are, is going to affect those trees. Now, there is some landscaping, for instance, on either side of the staff entrance. And that certainly could be, you know, we could do some plantings there. What I'm really just showing is, it's, you know, um, it's, it's, well, I, I should say that one of the things that we've been thinking about is, um, you know, what would be effective, you know, sort of soft scape for that area that doesn't require a lot of maintenance. Um, and so, you know, is it worth it to, for instance, um, try to incorporate, you know, any, any sort of plantings which are, you know, perhaps not really doing anything aesthetically to the project, uh, that end up just sort of being a maintenance item. So my, my, my druthers would be to sort of tone, tone down the amount of so, so, sort of like garden area um, that's in the front of the building.
What about that landing at the top as you go in the sheriff's entrance? That, there used to be a, oh, I think it was a potent tiller that was in there or not. Kind of unsightly, and it's just, the only thing I saw in the good fall was it, Mother Duck raised a duck once there one time, but other than that, wasn't, there wasn't a hell of a lot of, of benefit to having that. Do you have any idea what to do with that, Mike?
Yeah, I think the best thing to do is, is really just to have that be hardscape. Um, so that entire landing area would be of a consistent material and, you, you know, you could walk on it. Um, I'm not sure that area would ever be, be used by anybody. Uh, it seems like a place where certainly like when the weather is good, if you had a table and a chair out there, somebody could eat their lunch out there. But I'm not sure whether that sort of activity would actually happen at that location.
Well, I can tell you, Mike, that, uh, we have a thermometer on that wall right there as winded, and in the summertime or not, uh, every temperature could have been eighty degrees. It was over a hundred right there on that deck, so I'm not sure how useful it would be to try to, you know, to accommodate something midday in the middle of the summer, so.
Yeah, so, Bill, where I am right now is really that we would just be providing a consistent hardscape surface. You know, in the future, if there was something, activity that you wanted to do out there, you could, but I'm not contemplating providing anything for any activity in that area.
Do I see a slight rise in the handicap parking?
Yeah.
Pavement, Mike?
Yeah. Can we zoom in on that section where the car is?
Yeah, actually, we've, um, yeah, we, we leveled the ground right where the parking spot is. And you actually end up, that, that sidewalk, which is in front of the handicap ramp, actually drops about six inches as it heads towards the stair. So we're, we're following, we're following the existing grade there. Um, and, and you do drop down about, like I said, about six inches before you go up the stairs.
So there was a six inch drop from the, from the pavement where the car is packed to, yeah, right there with, the six inch drop right there?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Dennis, you think that's a, an issue in the wintertime plowing?
Uh, we usually don't plow in that direction, but uh, yeah, we'll see. I think, uh, with this, and we're thinking s- snow melt.
Yeah.
All through this and on this sidewalk as well.
Yeah.
So I, you know, I, we're gonna have a lot of, you know, I don't know what the ice situation is with the drainage situation with that is gonna be. Uh, we know it's gonna move downhill and we won't have to worry about, uh, salting this stuff too much, but that might become a concern here. I don't know if there's anything we can do to, like a.
But even though you're gonna have a heated, you're gonna have a heated sidewalk there, Dennis?
I think that's the plan, yes.
Yeah, that's what we're planning on.
And the ramp, ramp's gonna be heated as well?
Yes.
Wow, what's the energy cost to that?
Uh, well, we're, and this, is this, this Mike too as well? Where you have it?
Um, it, it could be. I mean, it seems like there's a lot of area that we're providing snow melting for. But my understanding is that the, you know, the building has plenty of electricity to do this. And, and obviously, one of the issues with, um, you know, the maintenance regime right now is, is, you know, using a lot of salt, you end up, you know, corroding concrete. So you have to deal with the snows one way or the other, or, you know, ice one way or the other. And certainly, snow melt is an effective way to do that. And we can capture all that melted snow, you know, through, through drains so that it's, you know, we don't, we're not gonna have any plumbing water.
Because we have a scupper.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, what about a different type of energy? What about hot water? I mean, because I have snow melt here already. It's hydronic. If we switch, and that's kind of a byproduct, a waste. Capitalizes on the waste of heat that you feel in here right now, the huge oversized steam bundle. Is that too much of a shift?
Um, no, it's not that it's too much of a shift. I had in my mind that, you know, the electric resistance was sort of like the easier thing to do.
Mm-hmm.
You know? And certainly, one of the issues with, with uh hydronic heating is, you know, once you put those tubes in the concrete, you sort of don't want to touch them ever again.
Yeah.
Um, so you're, you're kind of committed.
Yeah, well.
It certainly is possible. I would want to bring in the mechanical engineer, you know, to, to sort of give some guidance on which system he thought was, you know, more effective.
Yeah.
So we, 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 we mentioned this before that when we, before we had the, the, the nice renderings we have now, but I am worried about what happens right at that parking spot. Um, because to me, it looks like a tripping hazard and I'm not exactly sure what's, because there is a little little berm there, right, on the side of the spot?
Yeah, I think, um, that's an area that we're continuing to look at. Um, and whether it makes sense to put a, a handrail there or to just, um, you know, warp the grade enough so that we don't need to have that curb. Um,
Like just feather it away?
Yeah, sort of, yeah, feather it away. Um,
We might get to make it distinct, but.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, one of the things that we're thinking about is, is when a, when a person gets out of their vehicle and, and into a wheelchair, are they near a an area that starts to slope and so that, you know, there could be a problem?
Yeah.
Well, that and clearing it, you know, if there's a railing there, that makes it that much harder to clear. If there's a curb there, that's a problem. It seems like we're just creating a great spot to pile snow against that wall and, you know, that's, that's one of my fears.
Yeah, I'll try to get rid of that curb through adjusting the grade. I think it's possible.
If you drew it out more, yeah, it's more space and then ease it down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, so we also had some talk about, um, Dennis, about needing to do some replacements of the windows, is that right?
Yeah, that, that, those were issues that were, would be addressed as part of the original concept that we came up with. If we had, had had something that was a big enclosure year, we would have you had to deal with that elevator tower and there, there's some areas there that have, you know, leaky windows and other issues that if they're, if they're not addressed here, we'll have to address it in another type of proposal. It'll, it'll go on to our, to our capital improvement plan. And mentioning those things was the way, as Scott and I, uh, discussed, was the way to make sure it doesn't get overlooked. Because some of these things are important and would have been part of another project, just like this stair project was once part of the ICC job. And I just didn't want to lose sight of it, that's all. But yeah, those things will still need to be addressed.
And you're thinking that a, a new entrance right by the sheriff's office, right? That that would have to be redone?
This area here, yeah, this. I think we need, gonna have to have a new door anyway. The door that's there, I don't think is gonna take a closer, an automatic opener. And I think, Mike, do you have like a, is this where you press the button? Or something, or is there like a pull for that or against the wall?
Mounted on the side of the wall.
For a handicap door opener, which I think that this, this whole area here would have to be, you know, rebuilt to accommodate that. In my, in, in, uh, one of the, my questions for uh, Mike is can we build that into this project and uh, there's some, uh, something that we're discussing right now and uh, I don't see any reason why not. Because it's.
Dennis, doesn't the exterior on the, on the elevator shaft need some work too?
It does, down in this area here, this veneer, but you'll see, we're gonna be opening some of this, the base of that up. Anyway, because if the, the, right now, the cover goes level across this way, now we're kind of slanting down a bit. So I think that whole thing is gonna come into the exposed a little bit, Mike. You know, like one of those hydrangea is out there now? Is that still going, right?
Yeah, but actually it slopes down quicker now than the ramp does. But you're right, there's an opportunity there to, if we're, if we're gonna replace panels, this is the time to do it.
Agreed. So we, yeah, we'd want everything here to be a new finish. Like fresh start in that area, I think.
Now, I never really, this rendering really points out the length of that ramp. Is it, isn't there, are we gonna get in trouble with the, the, the physical distance from that spot to the door? Is, is there, or can that just be as long as it needs to be? You, you understand my question?
Because there you have these flat spots.
You got two, you got two landings there, Paul.
Yeah, no, I, I, I get that, I, I get that, you know, and I get the, why the slope, but I'm just worried about the, the actual distance is, is pretty great. Uh, is that pose a problem or is that not really a, an issue?
It's gonna be a nature fault, so I mean, it's, it's, you, you, length is determined by how far up you have to go, because you have to go twelve feet just to get a foot up.
Yeah, no, I, I get that. I mean, there, I guess there's other ways to minimize that distance of lift or something, but uh, is that distance, you know, much greater than you see, or is that an acceptable distance?
Yeah, so the, the actual distance that you have to travel is quite a bit. Um, but I think it's unavoidably so.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, if we could lift up the parking lot grade like by three feet, we would, but we don't think we can. Um, and yeah, may, maybe a good way to put this is, given the vertical distance that we have to go, I think we're providing an effective solution to go, go that distance, and I think, you know, to use the terms, passes the straight face test. I mean, I think we're, I think we're doing something which is an optimum solution to a a substantial challenge.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I don't, quite frankly, I don't see another way. I, I just didn't know how it compared with, you know.
Yeah, you, you wanna have the, um, wheelchair-bound person be able to get where they're going with the least amount of trouble possible. But it's about a, I think the overall, from existing grade, the overall rise is something around seven feet, four inches. And what we've done by manipulating the parking lot grade is actually reduce that to about a six-foot distance. So we, we shaved off about fourteen feet of travel just by manipulating the parking lot grade. We're hesitant to, yeah, we're hesitant to manipulate the parking lot grade more than we are because we end up actually just causing problems elsewhere, um, partly with the fact that there's that old jail right, right there. So we've lifted the grade up as much as we think is feasible. And then we made the ramp, you know, compliant to Americans with Disabilities Act requirements. And while certainly a wheelchair-bound person would wish the distance was shorter, this is a, this is a legal, effective way to, to, um, provide accessibility to the sheriff's office.
You, you mentioned the old jail. Uh, you know, that's in the back of my mind, looking at, at this. Uh, if they were gone, I don't see, I, I think you'd just have more parking, right? You wouldn't be able to solve the grave problem because of the garages there. Is that a fair?
Well, the, the driveway slopes down towards the, the garage bay doors.
Yeah.
And it also slopes towards the old jail.
Yeah.
Our ability to sort of safely contour the dr- the, that driveway is limited by our desire to not make the slope towards the drive, the, the, the garage bay doors any steeper. And also not to lift up the grade or, or make the, make the slope down towards the old jail anymore. Steep than it is right now. Um,
Yeah.
Which is to say that we could probably, for instance, pick up the grades, let's say, another six or eight inches. Um, if the old jail was not there, but we're not contemplating this project thinking that the old jail is going to disappear because it just seems like we can't make that decision.
That's right. Uh, this, the corner where the garage and that wall of the stair, you can't see my mouse, but yeah, Dennis, if you go right.
Dennis, if you go right in that corner. They'll keep, yeah, that corner right there, is that the, is that the? From these renderings, that looks like the low spot. Is that actually pitching towards the jail a little bit, the old jail?
Well, the two garage bay doors are. At the same elevation. Raid right in front of those two garage bay doors is the same.
Okay, but the rest of this parking lot sort of looks like it's all funneling to that. Corner in front of the doors there, is that just the the perspective or is that actuality?
There could be, there could be a mistake in how I've modeled the ground in that area, just because. Yeah.
No, that that grade, that grade pitches down from the base of the stairs to the bottom of the of the overhead doors. That that that's fairly sufficient. There is a corner right where now there is a. I don't know what that is, whether it's, it's not a drain, there's a, there's a pipe, six or an eighty inch pipe coming up out of there. Yeah, that PVC pipe, whatever that is, but that. That is sufficiently lower, right in that corner where that pipe is than than the base of the stairs.
Okay, so you're not gonna have, you're not creating a swimming pool there. It slows away from the garage doors slightly up to about here and then does flow.
It's kind of a swale, it's kind of a swale in the pavement. From the garage door and that that kind of sways and and pushes it towards a catch basin.
Is there actually any drainage in the parking lot itself, like?
There's a catch basin just to the left of that left hand door. Catch basin there.
So with all that discussion, I think this makes sense and this, I don't see too many alternatives, other than, you know, tweaking.
Yeah, I'd like to see us get out and get going on this. I think this is exactly what we're looking for. And even the heated sidewalk, I mean, if someday another board decided that was too expensive to maintain, just stop heating it. And that salted. I think Mike is right, in the long run, it might be cheaper to heat it and then to. Twenty years down the road, have to replace it because the salt deteriorated the sidewalk. What is Mike, what is like the next step if we like this design as it is?
Yeah, we'd roll right into, you know, construction documents so that we could go out to bid.
Gentlemen, you think we're that close?
I think I think we're pretty close. Like I said, my main thing is. I really wanna see. Some some creative thinking on getting rid of the. The bump by the handicap spot. That's my only thing I have an issue with in the design. But beyond that, I'm, I think it looks good. I like it.
Well, and 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 now that you've zoomed in a little bit. On on that car. It's making a a little more sense. Uh, but yeah, no, other than a couple little things that Mike said he's working on, I that. I don't see too many alternatives that make sense to me.
Mike, I I don't know why. Well, I shouldn't say, I shouldn't, I don't know why. Could we consider maintaining the the handicap? Parking level. To the left, another car width before we start pitching, that would take away the problem of somebody getting out of the car in the wheelchair and having to. Negotiate a slope when they get out.
Yeah, we can. We were interested in. Um, maintaining as many parking spaces that you as you as we could.
But that left, the one to the left of the handicap though could be sloped, in other words, you just have a slight slope on the. Vehicle from right to left.
But that doesn't increase the distance.
It what, doesn't what?
Increases the distance and will change your slope. E- e- you either you would have to shorten the ramp or increase the distance.
No, no, I'm talking about the pavement, Mike, just, I mean, Paul, just the pavement. In other words, take that retaining that curb out right there. Keep the elevation of the handicap for maybe another width for another car. Yeah, and then start pitching it down, that way you don't have that curb to deal with and. Somebody getting out of a vehicle right there on the left side into a wheelchair doesn't have to deal with a slope. It still would be level enough for them to negotiate easily. And Mike, I I think you're clever enough to fix this. I think you can see what our concerns are. And that would be the only suggestion I'd have is that somehow you address that curb problem right there. Other than that, I like it.
Yeah, I'm ready, I'm ready to move forward, to keep it moving forward.
Yeah, well, let's say that we'll take the next step then.
Mike, do we have to approve construction documents or is it just something that you? Create and at some point we just. Vote to. Go to RFP.
No, I would say that, you know. In a, in a month or six weeks, we would come back and do a final review. Making last minute changes at that point and and then. Hit the street.
That's good.
When we talk about perfect, what about timing, Mike? Are we gonna be able to get this out before contractors are filling up their next summer's work?
I think just because of the way. The design work is sort of sequenced, we're going to be at least, I would say. Close to six weeks before we do the final review with you. And then another week or two. To. Have the bid documents finalized. So. I I wish we could do this sooner, but I think we're looking at. Sneaking up on the end of March.
Saw Scott's hand up a couple times.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, that, I'm thinking that feathering out that. Ledge right there, I'm thinking that's the worst thing that could be there for a handicap spot. I'm thinking feathering it out. Is a lot better than a drop off. Excuse me, but. Uh, I just sent Dennis a text. I'm I'm curious about the windows. Does the commissioners have any interest in taking a look at this? I I feel comfortable sliding it into the project. Is now a good time to do it or at least get an alternative or, you know, an add on option here for the cost of it and then consider whether or not you want to spend. Art monies on that part of it. That's it.
I agree with getting it done. And if we end up not using art monies and coming up with another source, whether it's. Yeah, I think I I think that's the way we should do it. We should try to get it all done and. One fell swoop while we're tearing everything up.
Yeah, if you if you were not gonna use our, the other piece of that would be the convenience of of doing that now, it is that that could always be done later. And, you know, getting getting the ramp done and getting most of the work done, and I would defer to Dennis and. And Seeland around that as to whether this would be a a a great time or a, you know, does it make any difference?
Yeah, I'm asking that same question right now.
We can talk about that, uh, maybe, so just knowing that the commission has at least somewhat of an interest, you guys can talk about that and. And we can burn and go from there.
Well, my my feeling is I would like to see as part of this project and use our money. Or because we can use our money. That's just my gut feeling at this point.
Yeah, maybe we could. Just survey that area that we're talking about, uh, it could be. You know, this week, Scott. Just so that I get a real good sense of what the scope is that we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, um, and and yeah, you and I and Dennis, Dennis would be the one that could really. Show you what needs to be replaced and and have an idea and. You know, I mean, if it comes in a half a million dollars, I hope it doesn't, but, um, you know, we can decide, we can chat as we go along the way, but. Now that there appears to be some interest, I I think we ought to take a look at it as an add on.
Okay.
And if it drives the price too large, we pull it out that we and we know for a later day.
All right, so is that it for our report?
Yeah, Mike says good.
All right.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. All right, let's move on to number four on our agenda, the airport.
Good morning.
Morning.
Looks like just a monthly report is all I really have. I I do have a question. I see that the. Propane's coming up for bid, uh, Dennis is gonna put, I'm just curious to whether that includes the airport's propane or. Is it just?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thanks, Dennis.
Same, same contract. So I'm gonna move to accept and file airport manager's report as presented as memo dated January twenty first.
Seconded.
Okay, and when you got up to your vote.
Did we lose, have we lost? Bill, I assume.
Yeah, I think you did.
Does make this broadband thing a little more.
Then I think maybe if we take a break and he can, he can get in here. I can't imagine you'd have any issue with a report.
Yeah. I'll call a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes.
That's all I got.
Thank you very much, Leroy.
Thanks.
Bill's back, you wanna just collect his while we're.
Sure, hey, Bill. We just had a motion for approving the airport. Uh, monthly report, can I get your vote?
Yeah, I vote affirmative. All right, the sheriff is trying to get a. A screen in his office set up. If you can get on, I'm gonna have to leave.
All right, well. Can we, uh, at least in the meantime, uh, start up with, uh? The jail. Tim, are you there?
I am.
Awesome.
And Leroy's still here, um. So the first thing is, uh, Scott and Leroy and myself, Scott did most of the work. He put an RFP together for Leroy and I to look at. We have other people that. Chimed in on it and everybody who's in favor of it, so I guess I'll leave it to Scott to discuss what he's, what he's put together for us for an RFP that. For the cameras, so I hope we get approved, maybe we get it out, uh, get the process started.
Sounds good.
I was just trying to text Clark to see if he had any issues with this, with this item. Uh, we can. You know, if he doesn't get back on, we can always move it forward and if he has issues, well, I'll address those. Yeah, basically, it's an RFP, working with, um. With Tim and Leroy at the airport for security, new security camera systems. They both have a little bit difference. With regards to, I guess mostly is like how how long we have to actually, you know, have. Uh, storage capacity and in doing some research, it seems that. What they're both looking for or even the max is kind of very, you know, highly available out there. So we went top notch cameras, top notch. Um, specs, double check that with Dennis, um, well, top notch in our affordable range, let's put it that way. Um, and Chuck. And so you have the document before you and we're just looking for permission to release it.
So I'm gonna move to approve the camera system RFP as presented.
Seconded. Any other discussion?
I think Mr. Clark, it just came back on.
All right. Hey, Bill, we're, uh. So we're discussing, uh, the RFP, we've put it, there's a motion on the floor to approve it and now we're open to discussion. So the one thing I wanted to make sure is, uh, so I understand we're gonna, we kind of have it set up so that. It can be, it can be done individually for each location from different vendors if. If that has to happen, but we've, we've also have it open to to bundling it together, right, Scott?
Yes.
Do you have anything, Bill?
No, I'm all set.
All right, I'm gonna call the vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, Tim. What else you got?
Thank you, um. Have discussion about lowering the hiring age of corrections officers age of nineteen. Um, there are. I surveyed the the, um, facilities across the state. Um, they're aged from eighteen to twenty one, twenty one's been that current for a while. Um, there are four agencies out there that are hiring at eighteen that's had success. With finding the right individuals. I would, I'm just looking, we have a. Great high interview process, um. We have a great facility. We've done everything we can to try to draw people into the facility with your assistance, you're a big part of getting the pay rate. Lifted, um, so I'm just wondering if. We could have a discussion of lowering the age to nineteen for corrections officers. Um, and understanding that the vet system with the interview process would be, would be. As usual, um, taking liability and concerns of the county into. Consideration as we move forward through the hiring process.
So, Tim, I got a question for you and it's kind of naive, but I always want to ask. If you can give me like a a general overview of what's the required training that happens for a new recruit? Somebody, you know, that doesn't have a a background in law enforcement or, you know, like, kind of tell me where we're at.
Yeah, um. Lieutenant Shepard and I have worked together. We've got a formal two week training in house that we do, um, those shadows. They have the training from self-defense, the OC spray, uh, policy training. Uh, pop checks, they train on, they would not be handling, uh, no new employees are. Do medication or booking, um, so they'll be trained in control and. The floor. Uh, we have a very adept training and sign off program. Every step is signed off by officer that. Has. Provide the training and the individual being trained that they fully understand the procedure of of the training.
And do you feel confident that, um, if we approve it, you're gonna be able to? Spend enough time on the interview process and and everything to make sure that we're not putting somebody in over their head.
One hundred percent, um, like I said, Lieutenant Shepard and I, we do the interview process. The county is always the first concern because, uh, we know we're. A big, uh, part of the of the county. We do. We've turned away a a lot more than we've we've hired. We do a very extensive background check. And contact with the Maine Criminal Justice Academy if we have any questions, um. Sheriff Kane's in involved with the with the hiring process, so we make sure that. Everybody, even no matter what their age are, that they are prepared to come to work and provide the care customer control that's required to. Do the job.
I support this. I I think, you know, we we've got to widen the pool. Uh, I think that this i- is an attempt to do that. I also think that, you know. Earlier, that some young, you know. Everybody makes different career choices at different ages and I think if we can get. Give, you know, a younger person opportunity to to, uh, you know, in a career like this with with. You know, some advancement through the sheriff's, uh, office is as Tim has pointed out to us in the past, I I. I I support this. I think it's a good thing and you know, if it doesn't work, Tim's gonna be telling us it's not working. Um, I I I have immense trust in in his ability to run this and I s- I support this. I, I have immense trust in, in his ability to run this and I, I support this.
I'm supporting it as well. I think we lost Bill again.
So, I'm gonna make the motion to lower the corrections officer hiring age to nineteen as requested.
Seconded.
Clark's back, sorry.
Your motion to allow, allow nineteen, Paul?
Yes.
I don't have any problem with that.
All right, the vote's been called. What's your vote, Bill?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. This, this is, this is a big step, I think. Hopefully it will build some new officers up in to be, that can grow into be the. Some patrol deputies. We get them in here two years. We get some experience, get some knowledge and help them further the career in that, that respect.
Thank you for bringing it to us.
Thank you. And the last thing I have is request to hire Kristen Billings, Holyoke of Orland as a part-time on-call. As needed corrections officer at step nine A effective February fifth. Twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, is the shit.
Thank you very much for everything. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Is the sheriff available?
I saw him earlier.
Well, he may be trying to get to the agenda right now is the lateral transfers. And I'm looking at the side letter between us and the union. And I would move that we approve the lateral transfers based upon the criteria in the side letter. That's my motion.
And I'm gonna second that. And. And that's up to, up to step ten H one, if applicable, as I understand it, right?
Yes, step eight, right.
Yeah, so. Do we want to include that in the motion or that's implied, right?
That's, my motion was just consistent with the side letter and that's in the side letter.
Okay, so that's what I'm seconding.
All right, any discussion? I, I had a quick question on it. I know in. The sheriff's memo that he sent us that listed. Other towns and departments that are counties that are. That are doing a lateral move. Are we, we're not saying anything about vacation, correct?
No, that was never in his request. It's not on the.
Because, yeah. All right, that's, uh, sounds good. Any other discussion? Call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 John, with regards to the second. Last, last month, we approved the purchase of over three hundred thousand dollars worth of radio equipment from Brown's Communication without going out to bed. Part of that motion was that we create a written. Soul.
We lost them.
Why don't you, why don't you step in for the, for.
Yeah, I apologize not, I, I, I think you approved my request on that. I was out. Commissioner Clark can contact me, see if we can get something up and running for him here. And that's where I was. And we're unable at this point to get something running for him. So they can be part of the meeting. So just to back up. You did approve the request that we can thank you in that. No, there was no vacation. We didn't discuss anything along those lines. And the question now is the sole source issue. Is that, is that what we want to discuss?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the document that we sent upstairs to you pretty well explains it. You know, Browns is two miles up the road. They, they know our system. They. They've handled our system for as long as I've been here. They're very responsive to our needs and. I think that this certainly would justify a sole source at this point.
So Scott, have you received a document?
No, I was working with Pat on, on the document and. I guess we can, I can present it officially. I wasn't sure who was. It satisfied both Kitty and myself. And addressed all the concerns, but I can, I can send that to the commission just that you're, that you're aware of it. Came from the sheriff and RCC director Connery. And along with that, I was gonna put the minutes from a prior meeting. Is that kind of the way the letter worded was it kind of backed up your decision? And, yep, so I'll send it to you.
I, I mean, we did send that upstairs, correct? I'm just making sure that.
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah, Pat and I, Pat and I got it, yeah.
Okay, that, that was my only question. I want to be sure that we did that. That's a huge purchase. And if we have another vendor challenging us, I'd like to be able to show them. We gave a lot of consideration to, you know, complying and so on. So it's not, I'm not looking to approve the content. I'm just making sure that we have a document in place.
Well.
I missed some of that discussion. I missed some of that discussion, but you, you do have that, Scott, that document?
Yep.
Fine, that's.
There's, there's actually nine points on there, Commissioner, to justify. The single source.
Yeah, it's very well written. Like I said, Kitty, Kitty supports it too, so, yep.
Yeah, and I think the, the only thing that was part of that discussion is we just needed a document. We got one and once we see it. I'm, I'm satisfied.
All right, are we ready to move on to number seven on our agenda, deeds?
Yes.
I think Beck's gonna take.
Yeah, I can take that. So Julie isn't able to be at the meeting today, so she asked me to. Speak to this item for her. So I think you have the memo from Julie and. EMA Director Stanky. Right now, this employee works in EMA. As part-time administrative assistant. So the plan is for her to also work part-time in deeds. This will make her a full-time employee with benefits.
Sounds good. So it looks like we're doing three days in deeds and two days with the EMA.
Yep, I think that's what they've worked out now. And they're both, you know, agreeable to whatever flexibility each other requires.
So I'm gonna move to hire Jessica Sherborne as a part-time deeds clerk at step six A effective. February fifth as requested. And that sort of rolls in what, everything you've talked about. That's the only action you need, right?
Is there a second? I'll second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
I think he throws up again.
Yeah. Uh, let's see. And then we have one other line item for deeds.
Move to accept the resignation of deeds clerk Tracy Young effective February first, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that. Any other discussion?
One thing I'd like to mention about this, sorry, is that this, so the, the position that you just filled with, with. The part-time EMA employee is the position that, the new position that was approved in Julie's budget. So this vacancy now being created by the resignation of. Deeds clerk Tracy Young will open up a new vacancy. And so Julie intends to advertise for that a little bit down the road once she gets Jessica also.
So overall, are we increasing her, her number of people or no?
No, no, not beyond what you approved in the budget for this year.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I understood is that this is per, per the budget.
Yeah, and actually you're coming up a little bit ahead because this employee is being shared with another department.
Andrew, I think we're all set. Sorry, buddy, to get you, like, asking to jump on just in case, but.
Oh, we got Bill back.
All right, Bill. So we've got a motion for approving the resignation of. Tracy Young. In deeds.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 John, I'm going to have to leave you in command. So I'm gonna be travel time. I'm.
So, yeah, why don't we call a, why don't we call a recess?
Yeah. Yeah, he, he told me ten minutes, but, you know, ten minutes, and I think by the time he, okay, yep.
Yeah, we'll try to come back about ten after. Maybe a quarter after, yeah, ten after.
Ten after, ten after would be.
Ten after ten. All right, so.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
It's yours, that's got.
All right, meeting is back in order. And we are, I believe, on. Maintenance, Dennis, what have you got for us?
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, well, aside from my monthly report, which I think we covered pretty well, the highlights with Seeland or worse.
So I'm gonna move to accept and file facilities director, the facilities director's report is presented as memo dated January twenty-fifth.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And you'll see item B, which is a request approval to go up for bid for propane supply. And this is a, a three-year contract. I want to. Remind the commissioners that also that we own all of our fuel tanks. So we don't pay a, a premium. And this is also at the airport as well. Uh, for, I'm not sure Leroy was aware of that, something I thought of when he asked about it. And we get, we get a good deal on propane, what. I assume Dead River will bid, will bid again, but just to give you an idea of, of the pricing that we get. Price on the street net right now for a gallon of propane is around three forty per gallon. And we are paying one eighty. So which, a little high for what we haven't been able to budget for, but still a really, really good deal. We're happy to get it.
Does your contract. Does your contract cover the airport as well? Is it just for the?
It does, Commissioner. It's for both locations. All. The goal was to have all county operations and propane expenditures, including Bull Hill at the time. Pulled into the same contract.
But they just built the airport separately, correct?
They do. Now, it became such a, a, a problem with, you know, invoicing and. They gave them a different account number, but same pricing.
Okay, fine.
I'm gonna move to approve the propane spot bid document is presented and authorized going up to bid as requested.
Second. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
Uh, thanks very much, Jess. That contract runs from June to June, so this will probably go on, on the street in about three weeks. And as soon as you see the dates, I think we're looking for like a May. Of May meeting opening there. And Scott is just. Asking about the vaporizer. Good question. That's all set, that is better placed. We're up and running. We wouldn't be running with these cold temperatures without it. It's, this is what we need it for. And the. Air, the new air conditioning in the server room is being installed as we speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully done this, will be done this week with that.
Great. All right, Bob at the RCC, you're up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I move to accept and file RCC director's monthly report as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 The only thing I want to bring your attention, one of, a, a good story out of the, the RCC, we had a. A baby delivered on the nineteenth Madison Robichaud. It was kind of a, one of those calls where did it really qualify? Because basically she answered the phone, got the address and. Baby's here. But she did, she did finish out the protocols with the rest of the procedures. So she did qualify. Hopefully we'll see something for Mane EMS to celebrate that here shortly.
That's good. Yeah, it was a good story. Bob, I got a question for you. On your report. Number five, you talked about the loss that you had. Communications in that, it's, you say at the very end, or at some point in the future, we may look for an independent. SWCC radio system for redundancy. Can you explain a little bit about what your vision is for that?
The, the jail uses, that's the statewide car-to-car frequency that all the law enforcement agencies utilize. So, you know, like, Kittery, Kittery can talk to an officer out of Fort Candiff there within proximity. They utilize that when they bring prisoners and detainees into the jail. What we have, the, the connection is a, a phone line from. I assume it's in control. I've never seen it, but it's up, up in the jail to utilize a radio that's upstairs in the attic. And because. Of the limited capacity for radio frequencies, there are shared channels on, 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 on some of the radios. So. The radio that we have for law enforcement shares resources with the statewide car-to-car. So whenever anybody's talking, say at the jail on statewide, we may not be able to talk on the sheriff's frequency for. A few seconds while they're, they're doing their communication. And what happened on that day. At some point in the morning, there was an issue that was created that caused a, a constant key. On the statewide car-to-car going through the phone line from the jail upstairs in the attic, which. Just, which basically took over control of the radio and we weren't able to communicate with our, with our law enforcement partners because that, that constant key. So the, the thought process there, once they get it all figured out, we're able to, I guess it was a hut, they had a key stuck up, up at the jail. That caused that. Once they disconnected it, we were fine. And then they cleared that upstairs and reconnected the system. So we're back operational where we were before. And I, I, I don't know the history. I suspect it was probably an easy fix to run a phone line for the. From, from, from the new jail at the time to the radios that up in the attic. I, I think probably, you know, having seen this. Doesn't take much to, to, to have an open mic like that. You know, set something down inadvertently. You know, we have a similar system at my fire department. And anytime somebody sits on the desk, inevitably the. Mic is under their back and the world hears what they're saying. So we, we may want to at some point look at a small radio, just. This little radio receiver upstairs at the jail. I haven't talked to Tim or Chef yet on that to see what that looks like. I don't think it's a very expensive, you know, it's very short range. Radio system that they may be able to, to have in house. Just to, to kind of separate that out. So I, I guess it's only been a problem this one time in forever since it's been there. But it was, it was identified fairly quick, but. You know, in the future, we, we may want to look at separating that out a little bit.
Well, like I said, if it becomes an issue where you think it's something that's warranted, then.
Well, I said, it hasn't, it hasn't been an issue. I said, the only time, you know, we have a couple of other radios that. We have, they're shared in the same radio unit that we may look, you know, in the future, want to separate those out as well. But for now, I think it, I don't think it's a huge issue at the moment. And just, it was a temporary thing that was, was corrected. We just weren't really aware of.
Sounds good. All right, and then we've got another request.
Move to accept the resignation of RCC dispatcher, Willian Neville, effective February fourth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm gonna move to approve advertising for a full-time RCC dispatcher as requested.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
So, let's see what time we got. All right, let's move on to, do we have Millard? Hi, Millard. All right.
Before we start, John, Millard. I seem to recall, we always tried to get you early on so you could get out of there, back to business and whatnot. Did you, did you want to go later today or have the. Overlooked you or what's going on? Would you like to be sooner in the meeting? overlooked you? Or what's going on? Would you like to be sooner in the meeting?
Clear as matter, but it's up to you guys, whatever, whenever you want me.
Well, I, I thought before it was, uh, we were accommodating your personal schedule, so anyway, have that discussion with John and, and Rebecca if that's the case.
Sounds good.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to accept and file a UT director's report as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Alright, Millard, you got a, uh, contract for Small Animals Clinic?
Yes, they, this is an annual contract with the Small Animal Clinic.
I'm gonna move to approve signing small animal clinic contract renewal as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Millard, tell me a little bit about the, uh, LUPC filing that you've given us.
This is the lower lid mountain pond dam. This issue has gone on for several years. Um, we did, the, the commissioners did a field trip there. And I think the only commissioner on the board now is, uh, Commissioner Clark. The other two are nuisance that field trips. What it is, is, um, lower lid mountain pond and middle lid mountain pond, a man-made ponds. Uh, there are two dams, one on, uh, Seven Mile Brook and one on Stavation Branch Brook. The dam in Stavation Branch, they were both, uh, wood crew dams from a long time ago. Uh, the one on Stavation Brook has deteriorated. And the, uh, uh, lot owners around, um, lower and middle lid mountain pond have been trying to get this, uh, dam replaced. And finally, the application has come before the LUPC for approval. But because the complexion of the board has changed, uh, I really kind of wanted to get the board's, uh, vote of approval to move forward with this. And I will, uh, would relay that to the LUPC whichever way you vote to go. But I think this is a good thing to support, whether, without these dams, those ponds will dry up and a lot of valuable shorefront property, property will be in a mess up there.
Millard, Jer, if I could, Millard, I think, I think John was with us on that field trip. I don't know if he remembers. You, you said that was that same dam we visited? It's like a little grassy area we pulled into, one of the lead ponds and walked right up to the dam?
I don't remember it now, to be perfectly honest, but that seems like, that seems like 10 years ago to me right now. So, I hear you.
We're looking at these field trips annually. And then COVID hit and it kind of got put on the shelf. But, uh, I do think they're a good idea so that everybody's aware of, of what's, uh, what's in the pipeline out there and the.
So, so I'm, I'm a little familiar with this. I understand the concept. Uh, I support this. Uh, as, as far as I understand, th- these, these, uh, applications to the LUPC, they're just an application or, or a request for us to comment if we choose to, to comment. Uh, so I, I was just gonna move to, um, the, the comment that we're in favor of this application, that simple.
And I second that motion.
Any other discussion?
I do recall this, okay, it's up there next to Spencer Preble's camp, uh, some home up there. I do know where this is and it isn't die a need and it, uh, it was being taken care of improperly, at least illegally by some little property owners. And this is a good way to do it, do it right. So this is a good thing to support.
Yeah, so I, now that you say that, I, I, I think I know where this is, so, uh, but it makes sense to me.
Right, all, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Millard, before, but, excuse me, before you go, what's, uh, what's the progress on getting your tractor fixed?
It must been a long plan record. And there's a couple issuers there. We bought the tractor from Ingraham Equipment. Then the next year afterwards, Ingraham Equipment got out, bought out by Borregad Equipment in Bangor. So, Christmas time issue, it needed a new battery. And Dave went to Borregad in Bangor because it was closer. So they ordered a battery and it came in the wrong battery. So then they had to reorder it. The second one came in the wrong battery. After the second time going through Bangor, I took the existing battery and went to Thondike, uh, Knox and, uh, got a battery and brought it back. Then we tried to get the, we put the battery in the truck, uh, in the tractor last week. It was the coldest day last week and even with the new battery, the tractor wouldn't sat. So Dave has the battery, I believe it's at the sheriff's office in, on a Chacha. And tomorrow, we're gonna try and get it sat at again and take it to Knox to, uh, get the, uh, serpentine belt, uh, fixed.
What, uh, what caused that serpentine belt to break?
I do not know. It's not broke. It's, uh, it's like it is stretched and part of the belt is on top of the edge of the pulley. And I fear is trying to run it, it may cut the serpentine belt and then the engine overheat. Um, so we don't want to run it any more than, uh, enough to get it on the trailer and get it over and get it off the trailer where they continue.
You think you might have a malfunction in the pulley or something? I mean, that's a brand new, you haven't had any hours on that.
No, there's hardly any hours on that tractor per se. Um, we had it, we had it in the shop last fall, October-ish. Um, and they replaced a line on the heater hose, radiator hose. Um, I'm surprised they didn't notice it then. But they didn't, anyway. And I don't know whether it was something that they loosened up when they were replacing that hose and it didn't get tightened back up enough or what happened. But it had very, it didn't have a day's work on it from the time it was over there, getting the heater hose replaced until, uh, Dave found this, uh, belt issue.
Are you going to wait for it? Are they gonna fix it while you wait? Or are you gonna take it?
I'll take it, drop it off and.
So we're not gonna have that still for a while, huh?
Right.
Geez, that's discouraging. The biggest storm in four years and there's that $80,000 tractor. We weren't able to use it. It's a shame. Okay.
We tried. Well, again, it was the coldest day so far last week and it just, it wouldn't sat. It would turn over with the new battery, but not, didn't turn over enough to fire.
Alright, good luck tomorrow with it.
Thank you.
Alright, Treasurer up.
I move to approve the monthly bills and warrants as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, and then, uh, Commissioners, we have today the Community Benefits and TIF Analysis Worksheet for you to review. I think you already have it. And you can let us know if you have any questions.
Well, I got the Community Benefits Report, but I don't have a TIF Report. I thought that was a trio report that you generated, Scott, on TIF. The CBA was a spreadsheet, but the TIF Report was a was a, is that a trio reporter?
Yeah, is, yeah, is that, is that how you, is that what you wanted? I could not remember for the life of me how the TIFs, um, how you wanted the TIFs reported. I saw, you know, with this, with this spreadsheet, but yeah, we can, uh, we can get those done up and forwarded to you so that you guys have those.
Well, I I don't recall what they looked like either. I just know that they were a different format than the CBA report is.
Mm-hmm.
In any event, Monica, we didn't get, uh, we got, you know, some of us might have got something. This is a funky-looking report that we got on TIF, but it doesn't tell us anything. And quite honestly, I don't even know what it is. But anyways.
Yeah, yeah, I saw those sheets. I have no idea what they are or why they were put in, but.
Yeah, I, I couldn't make, I couldn't make that report if I wanted to.
Rebecca brought it to me and we were both like, what anyway? So we apologize or I apologize for that. Um, I did send the email with the, with the, the, um, spreadsheet attached, but evidently you're, you're having, you didn't get it or, or something. I'm not sure.
I, I have, I have the CBA spreadsheet.
You do, okay.
I don't, I don't have the TIF Report, so.
Right, yeah, we can get those TIF Reports too, but Monica, Monica will point out the balances there in the yellow, or the highlight.
Monica, Rob, in your CBA report, how, I don't understand the terminology here. The last entry, undesignedated, 371,000. What's, I thought if we undesignedated, that would increase the balance. In other words, it's no longer a designated amount. What, what's that?
That's just setting up the year for the, for the year's budget.
Yeah, that's the amount that we took for the budget to write down the rate, right?
Right.
Why is that term undesigned? Why isn't that designated?
Because it follows, it, it, it follows the, I would just follow in the, the, um, prior terminology, Commissioner, that you worked out with the, with the former treasurer. And so essentially how I read it was, is wherever it was coming from is what it was. So it came from undedicated, undesignedated or undedicated into the transferred offset taxes, which increased. I, I changed that piece of the, um, of the, um, description so that we could backtrack and see, uh, how the balances have changed it. So we increased it 421,000 and identifies line 50. If you go to line 50, the balance there is 50,000. So when you add the two together, takes you to the 421, you need 371 to get there. So, doesn't matter to me really what it says, if we can try to remain consistent, but.
Well, no, that's where it came from, right? It came from undesignedated in this fund.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
A, a, and what that means is, is that was money that hasn't been dedicated to any other purpose, correct?
Correct, yep.
So, and, so out of the undesignedated portion of that fund, the 300, you took 371,000. Now, has that been transferred? Or is that just set aside in the case that we do want to transfer?
You want to answer, Monica? Or you want me to?
Um, that has, that is set aside.
Right, no, no actual monies have been moved, so it's a budget.
So it really, it really hasn't been transferred?
No.
It's just been identified as funds that we may transfer in the future?
Yes.
Right. Because Monica wouldn't know this. Historically, this is how we've always done it. Just like last year, the 50,000. We're not gonna have to physically move the 50,000, so.
Yep.
Good point.
Monica, I was instrumental in trying to get the Treasurer to set up some kind of report, this report on the CBA. And the biggest thing I was looking for was common explanation that, that, that we would understand. So in other words, not the, not the sophisticated technical terminology that you and, and Scott use back and forth, but something that we could understand. And so keep that in your mind as you're, as you're making an entry here on the description. Try to help us understand what you did. So if this had said from undesignedated, set aside for taxes or something like that, then we, we'd have understood better what, what it means.
Very good, okay.
Yep. And I'm probably the worst of the three here in understanding this technique. Paul and John, did you understand what, what that last entry meant?
Yeah, because I remember the discussion in the budget.
Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna leave this to the, to the Commissioner Clark and, and to Monica to, for further on to, you know, I think one of the, one of the items would be for you to review it before, before you release it.
Sure, and we can, we can have the wording.
Yeah, I, I know. Just as long as we can identify it is what's important.
So when we, um, like, if we go back to that 50,000 that was undesignedated, I guess it says dedicated, so that year, did we set, we had set a set, was it only 50,000 we had set aside for offsetting the taxes?
So, so again, that's where I kind of went forward when I, when I put that line in. If you look on line 50, yeah, it says dedicated, transfer from offset taxes. We decreased to 50,000. So those monies that hundred, there was a hundred, then you go to line 45, which at that point, our balance was 100,000. So this time it did come from a dedicated account back into the undesignedated. Cause I know.
Yeah, from the 100,000, we only used 50, so you're putting the 50 back into the, the fund. Is that correct?
Undesignated, yep.
Alright. Do you have anything else for your report today?
Then there are the, there's the summary of the Bull Hill TIF, uh, undesignedated fund balance of 400,873 dollars and eighty cents. And Hancock Wind, uh, fund balance of 510,60822 for a total in that line of 2,000, 2,001918665.
Thank you. And we're gonna be getting, so it sounds like we've gotten some good response back on the, um, the bid for, uh.
Yep, the RFPs, uh, are due back to us by February 14th. Um, and yep, they've been in touch with either me or Scott and we've been back and forth giving them responses and uh, data that they need, that the banks need to put together their RFPs.
How many banks do you think we've got right now?
Uh, right now, I would say probably half a dozen that have responded.
Sounds good.
Then we also have the, uh, recapitulation letter, which summarizes the state tax valuation for Hancock County. I think you all have a copy of that.
Yep.
So I'm gonna move to approve and sign the recapitulation of Hank, of County Taxes as presented.
Second.
And what is this, what does this mean? What's this document mean?
It's, uh, just summarizing what we get for, uh, a state valuation from the state treasurer. And it shows the very slight increase in the mill rate, which is now point 00047.
So this is, so this is just a necessary document to establish the mill rate, county mill rate? Is that correct?
Yes.
That's the purpose of this whole document?
Yes.
And it lets us officially release, based off that information, release the, um, municipal.
Tax bills?
Yeah.
Tax bill, okay.
Or the municipal assessment.
Municipal assessment, yes. They don't like that word, tax bill, here.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And then we have a transfer sheet for you to review if you have not already. And, uh, and the original copy is in on Patrice's desk for you to sign when you get a chance. Um, but this was for moving funds from the RCC Office and Tech Equipment Line to the EMA Reserve Transfer Account to help with the RCC's share of the cost of equipment purchased through Brown's Communications. This was one of the EMAs grants, grant number EMPG20.
So I'm gonna move to approve and sign the request for transfer between accounts sheet as presented.
Second. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Excellent, thanks, Monica.
Thank you.
Alright. Do we want to, uh, do the, uh, uh, jail union contact update before we go to executive session?
Yeah, I can give you a real quick update, uh, cause then I think the executive session. Yeah, I can give you a real quick update, uh, because then I think the executive session will actually close out the meeting and. Uh, John Hamer's been patiently waiting, so we appreciate it. Thanks, John. Um, so it was ratified the last Wednesday. Monica, I'm sorry, Rebecca. Has been doing uh great work on updating the language and once that draft is done, we'll send it to you and to the union to. So to make sure everything's in line and at that point, if they're all set, um, assuming they'll sign and send back. So hopefully we can have this done before the fifteenth.
Sounds good.
Yep.
All right, Paul, you, you want to do our motion?
For executive session.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna move to go on executive session as presented by MR, MRSA Title One, Section four oh five, six A to discuss a personnel issue.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Right, thank you.
We're out.
We are coming out of executive session with nothing to report.
What's the adjourn?
Seconded.
Before we adjourn though. The. The move to go into a remote meetings was, was uh. Originally, it was, is for a month. We're gonna review that again. So we've had a month. Are we, are we gonna continue to, to meet remotely?
I think it was actually through the month of February.
Yeah. That's why I.
I remember the term a month. I just wanted to, yeah, okay.
Think we're planning.
I suggest a January, February, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I think one more, we, we, we can discuss at the next meeting and go from there if you agree.
I can tell you, there's uh still a lot of, uh, I get calls every day at work of people that are out. So, still pretty widespread right now, so I think we're doing it at least right now.
I don't know what happened with my system at home today because I've never had that problem to this extent, but I may not, that again, I may have to do something different, so.
Maybe why just get them in with something set up.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to, I'll have to set up my laptop or something upstairs or, or something, yeah. Move the issue.
I'm gonna call the load.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.